Good evening, everyone. Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you remember Ms. Lopez? Thank you. Before we get started, I would like to extend a very warm welcome to the staff members, students, committee members seated out there in the audience. It always gives me a good feeling to have people from the community, people from the staff that are at board meetings. It starts off our meeting on a very, very positive note. At least, that's what I think, and I hope the board, president board feels the same way. So having said that, it is now 6:00 P.M., and I call this meeting of the Southern Independent School District to order. If the records show that a form of board members are present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please stand. Please allow your presence.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us all together today. We thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask you for wisdom. We ask you for understanding. We pray that we push our selfishness aside and do what is best for our students, for our staff, for our district, and for our community. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one in indivisible. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2024, and February 26th, 2024?
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for February 13th, 2024, February 26th, 2024.
Do I have a second? A second by Mrs. Martinez. All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. And now we have some celebrations. I believe the first one is girls' basketball.
Yes, committee board president, board members, and superintendent General will have some celebrations of student achievements. If Coach Craig Foster, our athletic director, will come up and recognize our student achievements.
I'd like to just say a few words before I bring Coach Lopez and her team up. We just want to thank you for the support. I know I'm new to the district, and I came in right in the middle of basketball season, last board meeting, we were heading off to the playoff game, and just to watch both our girls and our boys compete is something special, and I know we get to see that every day, and you guys get to see that when we get out on the courts or in their respective venues, but just want to say thank you to that, and especially thank you to the coaches, their staffs, and our athletes. So at this time, we'll have Coach Lopez, she'll come up, introduce her staff and the girls. I know some of the members were unable to make it, both boys and girls, but we want to recognize those who are here.
Hello, everybody. I'm Coach Lopez. My girls were on their way. I'll have to go. Come on, come with me. I know, they're all embarrassed, they're making it. My staff is made up of Coach Fraga, that's the alma, Coach Fraga, and Coach Liba, and Coach Saratola, she's a sophomore, so she wasn't able to come today. But our team consists of, this year, our numbers were a little low, but we had 10 girls, starting with my, my point, come here. Rihanna Gonzalez, my number one, then we had Miranda Castillo, we had Alessandra Torres, Alessandra's gonna make it today. Then we had Daniel Saliva, we had President Serra, we had Catherine Palak here, and we had Elena Benjamin, my senior, and Alida Rodriguez. Together, we managed to become by district champs, and we went up to area. We lost there, but okay, had a tough game. And like I said, they were awarded some all-district awards, all-district selection, Defensive Player of the Year with Alessandra Torres. First team was Rihanna Gonzalez, second team all-district, Elena Benjamin and Daniel Saliva. And honorable mentions, Clarissa Diaz and Rianjoa Castillo. It was very hard for these awards to be awarded to these girls, and we have to compete with the rest of the district, and the other coaches have to vote for the girls. I just present my girls, and then they vote. So it's very hard to get some of these awards, and they did excellent this year.
Yes.
And then we're gonna take pictures while. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I'm so sorry. Congratulations. I'm so sorry.
A little soon. Congratulations.
Congratulations to board if y'all will come up so we can take a picture. Y'all wanna stand at the bottom, girls?
The power's going top.
No matter.
Good job, guys.
Ready, one, two, three.
And then if we could have Coach Vigo Metz, he'll come up, and he'll introduce our boys and his staff as well.
I just wanted to say a couple of words before I introduce everybody. I'm Coach Lopez. First of all, thank you for inviting us over. We appreciate it, and I just wanted to share some gratitude for some people while I'm up here. Thank you for the parents and community who helped fill up the stands during the season. That support does not go unnoticed, and I know the kids love it when they see you guys up in the stands. Thank you for my managers and assistant coaches, and I'm gonna try to not leave anybody out, Andrew Wajardo, Joe Charles, Coach Cisnetos, who's coaching baseball right now, Coach Cortez, Coach Romero, and of course, Coach Albert Castañeda for helping to run the basketball program. And of course, thank you to all these kids. I mean, they work their tail off every day to win back-to-back by-district titles, and that's just a testament to their hard work, and seeing these guys come together throughout the season, it's been a joy to watch. And I tell them all the time, and I'll tell you guys, I'm very, very blessed to be able to coach these young men. I'm very, very proud of the growth that you guys have shown as players, and most importantly, as people. And so, without further ado, let me just call them up one at a time to be recognized. So when I call you guys, Kyle, Agira. You start back to the first team all-district selection. Noah Gonzalez. Austin Vaughn, another all-of-class. Our Defensive Player of the Year, Evan Lopez. Our freshman, Jake Martinez. He's not here, but he did a great job as well. Jaden Martinez. Devin Sanchez, great job, Devin. Sammy Wajardo, great kid, not here right now, but he did a great job for us also. Also, let me get, Jaden Castañeda, also known as Scott. Another kid that are not here, not able to make it, Jordan Martinez, Dominic Trevino, Justin Alvaro, and of course, our filmer, Andrew Wajardo, and of course, Coach Cortez. Have you kindly come up here? He's my JV coach. And like I said, guys, we appreciate everything you've done. You guys work your tail off, and what else can I say? But I love you guys.
We're gonna be seen behind him.
Yeah, I know. Congratulations. 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 Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you for the invite.
If y'all can get down on the bottom.
Mrs. Johnson. Can you light a sketch? Light there.
There you go. Okay, ready, one, two, three.
Thank you, sir.
I left one for that. I can say one more thing, I'm sorry, guys. He's not here also, Ray Garza did a great job for us, and of course, thank you Coach Foster also for the support.
Well, congratulations, boys. I think the girls are still here, on back-to-back, you know, champions. I know it's very difficult, and of course, your dedication, your perseverance, hopefully we'll continue for next school year, so. So proud.
Yes. So proud.
And at this time, boys and girls, if you would like to leave, or you're welcome to, oh, look at them.
They got one more.
I guess maybe. Did he ever let you? Do we have anyone that has signed up for public comment? Okay, thank you. The first information item is discussion of benchmark scores for the 23, 24th school year.
So I'm gonna say a few words before Mr. Flores starts. We did give you a copy, because I know up there it's sometimes hard to see. We also gave you a longer copy, and even that, I have to get out my mouth a little bit, because it's hard to see, but Mr. Flores also provided you tonight with a copy that's a little bit easier to see, and the numbers are a little bit bigger, but he'll go over, this is our second benchmarks for the year.
Hello. Good evening, Board President Castillo, Superintendent Mrs. Flores, and members of the board. Again, like Ms. Flores mentioned, you have benchmark number two scores. We also provided benchmark number one, so that you can look at both, and you can see the comparison of the scores between the first one and the second one. Some of the strengths that we have is that our ELA continues to improve, our science and social studies also improved at Green Junior High. Areas of concern for us are the math scores. We did see a dip in our third, fourth, and fifth grade math scores when we do compare them to benchmark number one, and we also, but in grade six and seven, we saw those math scores increase. We've also had an area of concern in the area of fifth grade science that is still a concern for us as a district. So one of the things that we did, we gave an assignment to our principals, we gave an assignment to our teachers on one of the days, well, actually, it was the day that we didn't have school, when the towers came down, we basically gave them an assignment to do. And what the principals and the teachers and the grade levels did is they looked at all their students. They focused on the students that were going backwards. Students that are going backwards are the students that are not showing growth. So we wanted to make sure that we identified who those students are, and what are we doing to help them. We also looked at our students that are meets. The data shows that we don't have a lot of masters, but when we do compare it to the last benchmark, we did get more masters and more meets. So the only way to do that is to look at our meets, to see what we can do for that population to increase them to become masters. So that is something that they did. I know some principals are here, they worked on it for about a half a day, then they continued it the rest of the day. It was working together, as a grade level, working together, as even as elementary schools, they were able to meet together. So they came up with a plan, they submitted the plan, and then this past week, last week, they shared it with Mrs. Flores at one of our principals meeting, the strategies and the interventions that they are doing to help the students. Something else that we have done as a district is our migrant, Mr. Cortez, our migrant director, Mrs. Laredo, Laredo also have, and Miss Rodriguez, have also looked out for contracted services to provide that as an assistance for our schools and to help our students. So what we've been doing is we've been going back and forth, looking at the rosters, looking at the names of the students, making sure that they are in a tutoring group, make sure that they are included, make sure that they are also part of ACE, if not, we're making phone calls to make sure that the students are staying, or that they do get placed with a tutor. Again, we also have contracted services that we've also provided for some of the schools, not all of them. The other thing that we have done is the CNI department, is we've also reached out to our schools to let them know that we are available to go and assist them in any way that we can, which includes tutoring as well. So we do have schedules for math, for reading, and for social studies. Those are the areas that we are addressing right now. I will say that our focus is at the secondary. The new way that we are being held accountable, we're looking at our secondary. Our secondary is, has more scores, there's more tests administered there, so that weighs more. It's referred to as the probability. So because that is a bulk of it, that is what we are focusing on right now. We've also reached out, and we found pre-stud, pilot programs in the areas of science and math, to also assist us, or to assist our teachers and assist our principals as well. The other thing that we've done as a district or as a CNI department is we went out for the LASSO grant. The LASSO grant is the Learning Acceleration Support Opportunity, known as LASSO. And we were blessed enough to receive two parts of that grant, which is the math licenses and math planning. We know that math is an area of concern, so one of the decisions that we made as a district is we need to basically look at our math curriculum to see what we're doing. So this company is going to come in, they're going to, they're gonna set up the framework, they're gonna set up the vision, the framework, set up a system to address the area of math. We are in year one of that, that'll get started this coming school year, but they've already issued, they have an issue, but they will give us our licenses this school year so that we can start using them. So we are addressing the area of math as well. Again, we did see an increase from benchmark one to benchmark two in some areas. Math was an area that went down. I did reach out to the district, they had the same thing. For some reason, their third, the fourth, and the fifth grade math scores also took a dip as well.
If we look at comparison to last year at this time, because we also do that, we want to see where were we last year at this time, and where are we this year? So we noticed our meets and masters, again, with an exception of third grade, our meets and masters are going up from 15 to 40 many times, and so we also gave you that comparison and this one, so you can see from last year to this year, and not just from first benchmark to second benchmark.
So if you look at that first page that you have there, you have some that are in green. Right now, the ones that are in green, that is the projected letter score for that campus or that school. The first one that you see is either gonna be either domain one or domain two. The state, under the new accountability, the state is gonna look at which one of the domains is better. If it's domain one, then they'll go with domain one. If it's domain two, they'll take that one into consideration, and considering what letter grade the campus is wanting to get. And just a reminder, right now, we still have accountability under litigation. We were told it was gonna be sometime in February, it's now the middle of March, and we still don't have.
Last year's.
Last year's accountability.
And the benchmark that we used was a release test, so not everything had been covered. And so we also look at that to see what still needs to be covered, how did they do on what we have taught, and what else do we need to spiral in? So we look at many things like that, and they're finishing that up, and that's what the principals discussed as well.
So benchmark two is the only and the first release test that the state has given us. Benchmark number one was a little mini practice test that they came up with, but that was not issued to students. So our students had never seen that, or it had never been given to students, it was something that they put together, and they said, here, you can try this. The previous year, the CNI department under Dr. Campu created benchmark one and benchmark two. So it was something that we came up with, because there was nothing out there. Again, it was from practice tests, I don't want to confuse you, but benchmark number one was one that was released by the state, but it was a practice one that had not been administered to students, but benchmark two was last year's release test. If we want to go back a year further, it was a different test, different accountability, but when you look at benchmark two from last year, we're doing way better this year than we were last year, to benchmark two.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I'm sorry, what is that? Which one? It's R, L?
Reading Language Arts.
Oh.
Yes. Now, remember that the test used to be just reading, but now they've added the essay component from third grade all the way up. So that's a little different than what you've seen in the past.
And I know I asked you this question, sir, but the next round of real test is in...
We're gonna see, math, math is gonna be the next one that we're going to see. Math, the dates are gonna be starting April 20th through the 24th, but I think one campus is on the 30th as well. So now it's a window, so they have a window of when they're going to test.
It's targeted, targeted.
Yes, yes.
So you have a month, basically, with all this intensive tutoring.
Yes, pal. That was one of the things that the principals created, with their teachers blitzes, tutoring, interventions, pull in, push out, things of that nature.
So hopefully, this, these folks will improve for the real test.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just speaking from my child. I know when Sadie was taking her math, she was very nervous, and after school, I asked her, well, how did you do? She goes, well, I don't think I did very well. And I said, why? And then she says, 'cause I couldn't remember some of that stuff. And so I think just reviewing what was done in the fall would have helped her, you know, kind of feel a little bit more comfortable. And I said, well, this is why you have to learn it, not memorize it, so.
But I think it's what the release test, they presented information, or tested on information that hasn't been taught.
Yeah.
And maybe that's what it was.
Well, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I was gonna say, in the fall, she was okay, but it was in the spring, because it had stuff from the fall, I guess, where she was already tested, she couldn't remember.
And one of the things in third grade, I talked to the neighborhood principals about, is sometimes the way we teach it is not to the level of difficulty. And so we have Sharon Wells, we need to make sure that we supplement Sharon Wells, because alone Sharon Wells doesn't test like to the level of the difficulty that they need to.
I do have a comment, though. I was looking at the benchmark one in the high school and benchmark two, the most recent one, and I do see, like, on benchmark, we didn't have any meets or masters in the algebra one, but we had 15, and that was meant in the meet. So there is, you could see, even though we're not where we want to be at, at the high school level, but I can see, there's no zeros, not passing, as you can see in the meets and the masters grow, benchmark. How does that impact, like, the overall score?
One of the things that, that's one of the things that the principals and the teachers worked on, so now they're looking at those 15, and we're basically looking at, okay, how many students are close to becoming masters? And we're also looking, we're treating all the students the same, whether they're meets, masters, or approaches, what is that one area that they still need that could put them over the edge to become masters?
Even in all areas, even in approaches, you gained a lot of kids that...
Did not pass before.
That did not pass before, but they're not, so we hear, compared to, you know, 80, 93, you got more kids getting closer, closer, that grow.
I know, and Ms. Flores shared these works with me. I basically said, and this is very encouraging, you know, so hopefully with all this intense tutoring, whatever's happening with each particular child, hopefully all this will bump them up to the next level, when the real test, you know, does come around. So I mean, I was, I basically told her, this is very encouraging, and I was talking as a principal, not as a board member, so I've been through this before.
I wanted to, follow up with Mrs. Pontalo. Do they offer, like, studying methods that will encourage the students to, you know, come back from the beginning of the semester, the year?
Right now, that free thing that we have right now, then, it's a pilot program, that is something that can be used to go back and review, to go back and spiral what was done in the first semester, the first, second, third, six weeks. That is something that could be used, definitely, within that, in that math class.
Any other questions, or Mr. Flores? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good report, sir. The next item, under information items, is report from a board member on the Casby Hermans camp for 2024.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity. As many of you know, that I've been on the board like forever, so you would think that I go to conferences and don't see anything, but we're living in a very interesting time right now, and new challenges are facing public education. So I was very, very encouraged by the sessions that I attended. We started off with a session with Dr. Adam Science. He, in fact, he was born and, or raised in the Ramonville area, so he's a local guy. And it was just, I mean, you could hear a pin drop as he was sharing his life with us and where he was, and one thing that stuck out to me was that, because I feel the same way, teachers were the light in the darkness of a childhood. And that, to me, was a very strong statement, and that's why our teachers are so, so important, because I share with my own children that I had a challenge in childhood, but the minute I stepped on the school bus, it was a different world, and so I could definitely identify with him. He was very, very engaging, he was just bringing back my trip to Galveston. I don't think I had came to Galveston, it was a long drive, but it was worth it. The second session that I attended was a community engagement and legislative advocacy. And I think that once you run for a public office, you have signed up for advocacy. If you truly want to, I guess, make a, not necessarily a difference, but provide the right resource for the child, you have signed up for advocacy, be it for self-advocacy as a trustee, what do I need to do to learn more? Individual advocacy, these are the issues that I see, and system advocacy. System advocacy was so interesting to me, because we cannot just sit here and say, well, this is a weakness. We cannot. And so you have to look at systems and see where that system is taking, where is it helping in that process? You need to be able to feel comfortable to speak to your local legislators, to support increased funding for, like, say, for now, for example, we're dealing a lot with mental and behavioral health services. You need to feel comfortable to talk to your legislators. They need to know you by your first name, and if they don't know you by your first name, and you don't know your legislators, it's really, there's no purpose in you being a school trustee. The word trustee means that they trust you, that you're gonna do what you need to do. You need to be able to arrange meetings with community leaders to better educate everybody, and increase access to information and data. Data doesn't lie. Data is data. So that was the second one. I did, the third one reminded me of Alan Moore. He was building a dynamic child nutrition program. It was a loan view, I think it was a school. And they started, but we started, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Beal, when we had that garden, I think it was in middle school, I mean, in grade. What they used it was to show the kids, actually, potato chips do grow from the ground, it's a potato first. And so it was really, really a good session, and they encouraged the schools to use your resources, like your FFA and your community, to really teach the child. It wasn't so much the garden, but it was, and they showed us a video, I mean, the kids were like, they had never seen a tomato or a potato. It was really amazing. And so that was a very good program, I really, really, and I encourage, Ms. Flores, if you, you know, give them a call over there, because the kids started eating their food from a different perspective, and so that was really, really good. My favorite, though, was the one with the CTE, Support for Survival, was the name of the session. And what it was, and I know that I hear that often from schools, we don't have the money to provide the CTE, a certain pathway, we don't have the money, we don't have the money. We'll come to find out that since 2019, we have had the money in Austin. And so CD has been sending everybody information about what is called CCMR. And so CD has been sending everybody information about what is called CCMR bonus money. And that is money that's there. And I'm fixing, from what I hear from Historas, this is a very difficult, not just from Historas, but from different schools, that this is very hard money to get. And so I really want to study this issue. And if it's in fact impossible to get that money to the districts, we need to talk to our legislators. And we need to tell them, what were you all thinking? Because right now, as it is, forty-seven percent of our workforce is Latinos. And yet, they're the ones that have the lowest academic achievement. So you can see why we have not been able to bring that money down. And they presented a model that I will give the information to Historas, but basically, really, I need to give it to Region One. Because they presented a model where, say, La Feria can't do this, but Mercedes can. So it's actually bringing the money to the valley, through different school districts. Different school districts have, like, for example, Harwich has one of the best construction programs. And I've been going on and on about that. And so they can bring in the money for that. PHA has an excellent welding program. And I believe his brother has the auto, I know Charlie Clark has been telling me, Miss Casas, I know you can do it. I know you can do it. I know you can bring me mechanics and what have you. So it's working as a region to bring in the money to the valley. And so to me, I mean, oh, my God, this, Historas has been so patient with me, educating me. Because, you know, like I shared with her, all I really want to know is what money came down and how many students were affected. And I want to know, from one year to the next year, we added two more students. The next year, we added three more students. That's all I really, as a trustee, that's all I really need to know. The last one that I attended was building strong relationships with parents and families. And as I was hearing the scores, it just went, it matched exactly with what they talked about. Parental engagement equals better scores, equals reduced problems for our kids at school. And they said something that was very interesting. It said, the school has to intentionally give parents the opportunity to engage. And what happens is that the child, the child's home in the school setting matches. But if there's never that engagement, well, the child goes to a school and then they go home and what have you. So there's never really that engagement. So it's extremely important that we continue to... I got elected twenty-eight years ago on the platform of parental involvement, and I have not changed. It's just very vital to education. So again, I'm very, very happy that the school was able to pay about five hundred dollars for my trip. Tassby was very kind to me. They've known me for years. And so they were able to figure out a way where I didn't spend a lot of money. I also heard where some districts are not going to nationals, are not going here, not going there because the budgets are so tight. So I know that our school district is going because it's going to go present. And I'm very proud of that. So when they come back, I really hope to hear a lot of new things because that's really why you go to conferences, to bring, because you can say, I saw it. I saw it actually taking place. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I really, really had a good time.
Any questions, Ms. Casas? Thank you, ma'am. There are two items on the consent agenda, the monthly tax report and the change of board meeting date from April eighth to April fifteenth. Do I have a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda? I have a motion by Mrs. Montalvo. Do I have a second? And it's been moved and seconded to approve the items listed on the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. The next items to consider and possible actions are, first one is a discussion and consideration to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five academic school year calendar.
Yes, good evening, Board President, Board members and superintendent. The district elementary committee met to discuss and give a review of three different calendars. At least one staff member of every campus was representative, represented on the committee. Once the three calendars were created, a ballot was sent via email to staff to vote on the calendar. Calendars were drafted with the following, as you can see here, instructional days, staff developmental days, operation days, and of course, reporting periods. Once ballots were taken, were sent, as you can see here, the results indicated that the majority of the votes were for calendar number one, with a hundred and fifty-four votes. Calendar two received a hundred and thirty-two votes and calendar three, thirty-six votes. It is a recommendation from administration for the board to approve calendar one for twenty-four, twenty-five academic school year.
I know I noticed most of the elementary campuses voted for calendar two, whereas the secondary campuses voted for calendar one. What is, what is the difference?
Calendar one begins on the first of, the staff comes back on the first and calendar two, they came back on the eighth.
Also, it's later.
And so then the elementary calendar, they stay a week later where the other one calendar, so one of them starts a week later, ends a week later, starts a week earlier, ends a week earlier. So I think it kind of just depends on sometimes secondary with things that we offer, with, you know, yes, they choose to do that. Calendar number three was very much like calendar number one. It was my favorite, but as you can see, I lost. But, yes, so that was the difference really between one and two.
I just want to, I guess, I just studied, you know, that most of the, maybe, call them the baby campuses, elementary campuses was at number two, the secondary did what?
And I want to tell you something that all three calendars have that we're going to try this year. The last Friday in August, we have a parental contact day. We felt that it was important at the very beginning of the year to contact the parents, to have conferences with the parents, to go out and whatever we have to do to communicate with parents. And so that whole day is going to be dedicated just to setting up in the future, you know, kind of, it's kind of like when you go to the open house, you have maybe two minutes to talk to the teacher. Well, this gives you that opportunity to go and have a conference. What do I need to expect? What do they need to know? That kind of thing. So we'll be reaching out since staff development to set up those times with parents. So it's something new. We'll see how it works, but we're excited about that particular day.
Madam President, I move that we approve option one as the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve option one as a twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same side. Motion carries. The next item is discussion and consideration to vote on the Board of Directors of Region One Education Service Center.
So each of you have ballots. At the last meeting, we talked about nomination periods. There are, there is a position open for place four, Hidalgo County, and place seven, Brooks County, and Willsey County. We did have two individuals for each that are running for those spots for the Region One Board of Directors. And so we did, in your packets and the bios for the individuals, so that you had an opportunity to look at prior till today. So if you will please make that vote and then pass it to Ms. Pettis. She can collect that and we will send it to Region One. All board members get one vote at Region One, except for South Texas. And they have a lot of board members, but they still only get seven votes. They don't get what is something else.
The next item was discussion and consideration to approve budget amendment number one.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo and Ms. Historas. I have board members, and item seven, see a discussion and consideration to approve budget amendment number one. We are increasing state revenues by about $2.1 million and decreasing property revenues by $2.1 million. The net effect to the overall budget is zero. We're reclassifying state and local revenues due to the passage of the additional homes and exception that happened back in November 2023. Since our budget was approved in June 2023, we need to come forward to amend the original budget to just kind of shift the revenues from one funding source to the other funding source. You know, we certainly recommend approval. We do not answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions, sir? Do I have a motion to approve budget number one?
Madam President, I move we approve budget amendment number one.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Montalvo. It's been moved and seconded to approve budget amendment number one. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. The next is discussion and consideration to approve the superintendent's performance goals 2024.
Thank you, Board President. We have been looking at these goals for a couple of months. I did send them out and we discussed them at the last meeting. I had some since I sent them out to you last week, called me. I made some changes since last board meeting, Monday meeting. The whole purpose for me for the goals is what if we want our district to look like next year, a year from now, than it does this year? And so if you look at the main focuses, goal number one is student achievement. And we want to see, and something different we did as well is we have two columns. What is the expectation that I have for proficiency and what is the expectation for exceptional? You'll notice that some of these don't have exceptional because some of them, to me, I just need to do it because it's important that makes sure at this time we are there, but it's not exceptional. There's nothing I can do to get exceptional. So I'm okay with that, with the fact that it's proficient because I think it's that important that it gets done. And one of those deals with facilities because I think that we need to address some of the needs. But to me, you really think the exceptional when it comes to that. You just have to do what you do. And so you'll notice that there are four or five areas that have no basis. So it's either going to be needs improvement or proficient, that's it, in those particular areas. And so the second one addresses facility needs and that's where a lot of the areas, there was, one area that didn't have that. Then we have parental engagement. Defining that a little bit different in the fact that what is parental engagement? And instead of being, and I had a discussion with some board members, and we talked about going to a meeting is not engagement. It's involvement. You go and you watch, but is that engagement? But what is engagement? And to me, engagement is that classroom instruction that, and so if you look at the proficiency and the engagement, that's why I changed that a lot from where we talked about it a month ago to where it is now. And the exceptional is what do I do once I do that? If I give you literacy nights and if I do that, then that's above and beyond. But the other is proficient and proficient means it's an expectation. And so that's some of the engagement and parental involvement there. And then the next one is a discipline plan for our district. Something that I think that needs to be addressed district-wide is discipline, pre-K through twelfth grade. And that's something I'm tasking myself with, that we will come up with a district-wide discipline plan. We will target certain areas that I think that we need to address. It wasn't there last month when we reviewed it. I put compensation. Doesn't mean that compensation is not important for everybody that ends up watching this, you know, she took it off. But I believe discipline needs to be addressed. And then the last area is safe and secure environment. And if you look at all of those particular areas, a lot of those don't have exceptional, but I think that they were very important. Remember in the evaluation, though, the superintendent, there's part one, part two, and part three. Part one is all about the scores. Part two are the performance goals. And then part three, it's the finance, it's the community involvement. All of those things will always be on there because that's part three. So you will always expect from your superintendent to be financially stable, to have all those things. These are just above and beyond the part three, the basics. And so I did, again, thank you for the comments that I got the last few days and the adjustments that, that, you know, we needed to make over the last month. And any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Do you want to ask me a question, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Historas, under the, the whole one, you said, adversity, academic areas that need a reading, math, science, and social studies. We're not talking just about the testing, Verla. We're not talking just about the STAR test.
These particular ones are, well, not all of them. If you look at one and two are STAR test, number three is not STAR test. Number three deals with all, number four is not STAR test and number five, but number one and two are.
Because, you know, I'm thinking, going back to that CT, CCMR bonus, you know, the reason that a lot of schools don't get this because of the testing, the TSI, what have you. So somewhere improvement in that area will fall under this goal.
Not under the superintendent's, but under the part three. It falls underneath the part three because there's an academic and instructional part there, but it's not a specific, isolated one here. TSI isn't.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not saying specifically TSI type, but I'm saying to show student achievement.
That is, yes, that's part three, number, the first one of part three, it's all about instruction and education and that, and that falls underneath there.
Yes, because improvement in that area would show student achievement.
Yes, yes, that's in part three.
My question, Ms. Montalvo.
I'm sorry, it's not, which goal is it in?
I believe it's goal, where it says a superintendent will ensure town hall meetings for parents and community on school safety or health. I'm reading the exceptional part. The number of parents in attendance will increase from the twenty-three, from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I guess my question is, I know it's very difficult for some parents to attend. I mean, bottom line, they're either working or... So will that count online views? I mean, because I know you do put the information that is shared at the town hall online.
And I'm changing this up a little bit because for the last, well, I want to say two years, we've done three or four town halls. We've talked about budget safety.
Right.
But we do them as a community. So this time, I'm going to do one at the very beginning of the year. And this year will be, because we have our own police department, I want people to know that, the budget. But all of the rest of them will be on campuses. So I'll have one for Sam Houston parents, for Sanchez parents. So I think that is going to narrow it and sometimes smaller audiences are better than large audiences. And maybe that's more than when I had the large one. So we're still going to have the very first large one because I think that's important, but then I will go out to each parent.
Campus specific.
It may be our chief of police with Mr. Cavalcus. It may be, it depends on what the subject is. It doesn't mean that a parent from Sam Houston can't go to Bell. We'll announce that. But I am going specifically to that campus. And sometimes smaller groups, smaller campuses, you'll go out there. And then, of course, you know, if we have performances, they'll come. And so what we do with literacy nights, the performances aren't until after the speaker presents. Because, you know, if not, you know, sometimes they, you know, parents will all stay. And so that's something we're going to try. And again, we're just trying to do everything to get that information out to parents. But we will still videotape. We'll put it on for people who want to see that. And so hopefully, we, I want more in person. Yes, we do do the video, but I look at the in-person because then you can have interaction.
Right.
Just with the videotape, I don't feel like you can have that question and answer and interaction. So I'm looking for more for the in-person. So this particular one is going to be in-person that I'm looking for.
Okay. And I like that you're, you plan to be campus assistant.
It gives an opportunity as well, like, if you get to miss it as I'm using your parent from there and you really wanted to, you see the dates of the following two elementary.
Another campus.
And something that I'll do is, we may have a general, general topic of safety. We may have a general topic of finance, but then I'm going to do something specific for that campus. Now, that other parent may not want to hear about Sam Houston, but I'm going to talk specifically about that particular campus. If we're at the high school, there's certain things I want to discuss about the high school, but not necessarily, I would say, at Sanchez. So again, we're trying it. To me, if you do something that doesn't work, let's change it up and let's try to do something that may work. And in a year from now, we'll find out if it works and I'll let you know it worked or it didn't work.
Do you want to have a motion?
Yes, Madam President, I move we approve the superintendent's performance goals 2024.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Ms. Castillo and seconded by Ms. Pines to approve the superintendent's performance goal for 2024. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item is discussion and consideration to approve the UTRGV project MHS access to, accessing mental health services.
Good evening, Board President, Board members and board members. Tonight, we're bringing to you this grant opportunity that was provided to us by UTRGV's mental health department, led by Dr. Gossel. UTRGV has received a series of grants in the last couple of years. This is their second phase. The second phase is focusing on, well, their whole grant system is focusing on mental health, school-based mental health. health, school-based mental health with our region. They, they, you know, researched it, they know that there's a need within our region, so they're trying to increase the number of professionals that are coming from our region, and not only coming from it, but staying in our region. In years past, most mental health professional professions have left our region, because we didn't offer opportunities for paid internships down here. Lately, we have been offering these, so they're staying here, not necessarily heading out to San Antonio, Houston, Austin, and Dallas. So that, that's the, the big push with this grant with UTRGV. What they're doing with this, this funding is providing those professionals experiences down here in the Valley with school districts that are in need. And about ninety percent of the schools in the Valley aren't in need of mental health professionals. So, um, this grant opportunity, you know, came to us because, um, Dr. Nussel was very close with one of our, with our school psychologist after I did about the Garza. So she reached out and know, knows what we're doing within our district, trying to approve and put systems in place for mental health, um, overall wellness. So this grant opportunity would give us a triad of, of mental health professional interns for the year, fully funded with UTRGV's grant money. It would consist of a school psych intern for the year. It would consist of a, um, a soc, a master's level social worker for the first semester, and then one for the second semester, and then the same thing for a school-based counselor, first semester and second semester. They would fully fund it, like I said. They would pay their stipend, you know, their salary based on what the region's recommendation is, uh, which is rare, again, for interns in, in our community, because, again, trying to keep them here. The only thing that we, as a district, would have to provide is that one year of benefits for that school psychologist. So that would be a little, under ten thousand dollars for, you know, um, insurances and stuff like that. Um, so with this grant, again, these, these, a tribe of mental health professionals would be housed within our department, uh, but they would be going out to campuses based on, on these assessment that we completely pre-TRGV. So it can be one campus, two campuses, just depends on where the need is. Um, the whole idea of this program, or, you know, is that they are working in collaborative effort, and that's why it's important for them to be housed with us, so that they collaborate daily with each other, but then going out. They don't, they don't want these professionals to be working in isolation. They should be together. So again, the benefits are, they fund this, um, they provide them what they start, and they provide our supervisors with a small stipend for their, for supporting, you know, the staff. Um, they would, of course, we have access to the mental health clinicians, the UTRGV. Dr. Nussel would work with our personnel, our district, to provide professional development, putting systems in place, and just being that resource for us. Um, so again, th, this is an opportunity that was presented to us, and, you know, we discussed it, and we felt that would be a really good way to utilize some of that funding that we received through, um...
The Valley Baptist Foundation, um, with Mr. Cavazos.
Yes, so we thought, you know, what better way to use the ten thousand dollars for three full-time professionals that will be with us? And this will be this year, and if we want to, we can continue to do it for the additional three years that the, the UTRGV would be using, um, this grant. So that's what we're asking, if we approve this, uh, opportunity with UTRGV.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I move we approve UTRGV project MHS access to assessing mental health services.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Mrs. Montagl. It's been moved and seconded to approve UTRGV project MHS access to assessing mental health services. Any further discussion?
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Were any other districts, uh...
Yes, there are a series of ten to twelve districts that are participating in it, because this, this is the second phase. So, um, we are one of the smaller districts. They were doing big districts, and now they're going to smaller ones.
And do you know a couple of them that they're working on?
Yeah, Harlingen does it, um, Shereline does it, Edinburgh. It, it's been the bigger districts. Yeah, so now she's, you know, reaching out to the smaller...
Oh, some.
Any other questions of Mrs. Montagl? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. It is now six fifty-four P.M., and we are moving into closed meeting, persons in Texas Department Code Chapter five-five-one. Thank you, sir. It is now eight six, eight sixteen P.M., and we are now reconvened to open session. The board will now consider and take possible action on Mr. Keith Bauer and Mrs. Stephanie Bauer's grievance. Do I have a motion regarding Mr. Keith Bauer and Mrs. Stephanie Bauer's grievance?
Yes, Madam President. I move we deny the level three grievance.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. It's been moved and seconded to deny the level three grievance. All in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same side. Let the record show that the level three grievance is denied. Let the record show that the superintendent approved the retirement of Ernesto Garcia and Romaldo Guerrero. Any other motions?
Yes, Madam President. I move that we offer a probationary contract, as discussed in closed session, for the twenty-two thirty-three, twenty-two forty school year to Michael Moore.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Ms. Johnson, and a second by Mrs. Martinez to offer a probationary contract to Michael Moore. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other motions?
Yes, Madam President. I move that we offer a one-year term and/or dual contract to teachers, counselors, and librarians, as discussed in closed session, for the twenty-two forty-four, twenty-two twenty-five school year.
Do I have a second? Motion by Ms. Johnson, and a second by Mrs. Martinez to offer a one-year term and/or dual contract to teachers, counselors, and librarians. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. District announcement?
Yes, uh, we have, um, on March twenty-eighth, we've got the migrant family literacy at the Lee Cafeteria from five-thirty to seven P.M. We'll be having an autism walk on April eleventh from five-thirty to seven P.M. at Lion Stadium. New to district roundup will start from, will begin April the eighth and ninth at Lee Facility. Pre-K for tuition begins April fifteenth. Um, and then volunteer luncheon will be held on the twenty-fifth of April at the Lee Facility at eleven A.M.
Any questions of Mrs. Ramos? Okay, if there is no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Mrs. Martinez, and I have a second by Mrs. Montagl. All in favor, say aye, or...